Good evening and welcome to the May 18th, 2015 Merrimack School Board Meeting. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to invite Principal Johnson, Assistant Principals Zampieri and Bergeron to the table. And as they're settling in, I'd like to just announce that Chairman Ortega and Board Member Powell have been excused from tonight's meeting, as has student Representative Ms. Kira Crowley. And Ken, if you would do an introduction and at your appropriate time introduce the students that you brought with you.
Thank you very much. And also, thank you to the Board for allowing us to present tonight's MHS Year in Review for 2015. And I'd just like to remind all viewers that tonight's PowerPoint presentation will be available as you visit our website. And later, I'll speak directly to our mission and how its goals and objectives have been met or exceeded in this year 2014-15. Most importantly, we'd like to leave with our students, and we'll do so tonight by introducing three students to you, each of whom have met with success in a variety of areas and ways consistent with our mission. Tia Gomont, Wesley Nader, and A.J. Canoust. But we'll begin with Tia Gomont. So, Tia, if you would come forward.
Hello. My name is Tia Gomont. Oh, it's on. This is my second year at Merrimack High School, and I'm currently a junior. For the past three years, I have attended Air Force Junior ROTC at Alveron High School in Hudson. I joined the program freshman year while I was at the Academy for Science and Design. When I transferred back to Merrimack last year, I continued the program. Although vocational programs begin in junior year, I was allowed to continue. J-ROTC is a sophomore, for which I am grateful. I am also grateful to my parents, who have paid for three years of ROTC tuition, transportation in freshman year, and a car for travel this year and next year. For those of you who don't know what Junior ROTC is, it is a high school version of a college program that commissions officers into the Air Force. Our mission statement is to develop citizens of character dedicated to serving their nation and community. I've never met a group of more dedicated people with as much integrity as my classmates. Our unit is only one of four in the state of New Hampshire, and we have over 130 cadets, which is roughly 10 percent of Alveron's student body. During a recent inspection by the Air Force, our unit was deemed a distinguished unit with merit, which puts our unit in the top 7 percent of all units in the country. Air Force Junior ROTC is a four-year program. Our curriculum involves aerospace science, leadership education, drill, and physical training, all of which we do at least once a week. During the school year, we participate in three to four drill competitions. Cadet-led teams compete against other units in the state. Practices take place at 6:30 in the morning and are a great way for cadets to get involved with the program. This year was the first year I was able to participate in drill, as my class times were previously in the afternoon. While getting up at 5 o'clock in the morning isn't the best, it was definitely worth a lost sleep. We take home numerous medals at all of our drill competitions. We also focus on community service. We have VFW cleanups biannually, as well as adopt-a-highway cleanups. Three of the biggest highlights of our program are Summer Leadership School, our Military Ball, and our trip to Washington DC, all of which are being planned by my class for next year. I was recently named Group Commander, which will be made official at our Change of Command Ceremony on May 26th, which Mr. Johnson and two of my teachers will be attending. This means that I, along with my staff, will be in charge of the program next year. I will be in charge of planning and executing Summer Leadership School, a four-day collaboration between two other J-ROTC units from New Hampshire. It will be at Fort Devens in August. I will also be assisting the Deputy Group Commander with planning our five-day DC trip in February 2016. I will have numerous other responsibilities as specified in our Cadet Guide. For example, I will establish and enforce appearance, discipline, efficiency, and conduct standards, amongst other things. Air Force Junior ROTC is the best part of my day, every day. The environment in our unit is amazing. Colonel Thomas and Sergeant Dubois are two of the most selfless men I've ever met, and they go above and beyond for every single one of their cadets. The cadets in our program are like a second family to me. I formed so many wonderful friendships over my three years that were possible because of this program. There's never been a Group Commander who was a student from out of district, but I'm greatly looking forward to leading our unit despite the challenge of distance. I've met with the Principal of Alveron, Mr. Beals, who has expressed his support, as well as Mr. Johnson. I am very thankful for the opportunity I've been given and can't wait for next year. Thank you.
I know the Board is going to like to ask some questions, but one of the things about Tia is also her humility. I spent 12 years at Alveron High School years ago, and aside from commencement, the single biggest event on the Alveron campus is the event she speaks of. What she has not shared tonight is that in Alveron's long history, it is absolutely unprecedented that this position be afforded to someone other than an Alveron student. So, and the first time in the long history of Alveron High School, this great honor has been extended to a student beyond Alveron's walls here at Merrimack High School. This honor is just remarkable. So, congratulations personally to you from all of us here tonight. Well done.
Mr. Johnson? At this time, are there any questions from the Board regarding Ms. Gomont? Okay. So, I make sure, it's so new to us. I did have a couple of questions. I know that you'd be a, obviously, you're an ambassador for that program, and it's at Alveron. Have you gotten any student feedback from the Merrimack District that they are interested in maybe following a path of an ROTC program?
I've had a few people come up to me and ask me about it. Everyone's always really interested when they see me in my uniform. It's kind of a new thing, but I had one student in particular come up and ask me about it. He actually went over and met with a Colonel and Sergeant last year and talked about the possibility of ROTC, Military Academies, College ROTC, and he got a lot of great feedback from them.
Excellent. And that was really the question I had, was, you know, it's so unique to us, and I think we have a question for Administration as well. Matt?
Yeah, hi. I was just wondering, you know, what path does this lead you down to? What's your next step after this?
I want to go to the Air Force Academy for college. I actually got accepted into their summer program, so I'll be doing that next month. In June, I'll be flying out to Colorado and hopefully going there for college, if not Air Force ROTC.
Okay. And then after that, is there a service time associated with it?
If I go to the academy and become a pilot, like I want to, it's 11 years.
11 years.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Good. Excellent. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also have something for you and Ms. Chaffrey.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Tia. We're now going to move to A.J. Canoust. If A.J. would please come forward.
Hi, my name is A.J. Canoust, and I grew up around carpentry. At the age of three, my dad carried me around in a kid backpack while he worked on his custom-made cabinets in his workshop. In eighth grade, when we registered for our classes at the high school, I think I was the first one to sign up for woodworking one and advanced working with Mr. Carl. I also plan to take woodworking three, creative enterprise, at the beginning of my sophomore year, which I did. Since then, I've been in there every study and spare time I can find. I turned my first bowl in November of my freshman year, and since then, I've grown better and better. I love to pick out a block of wood and imagine what I could do with it. Should I make a vase, a plate, or a lidded box? I love seeing wood chips slide through the air, and I love seeing wood chips slide through the air when I shape the piece. The spinning lathe creates an adrenaline rush to keep me in the zone. I've made many bowls for my teachers and family, and they all love them. Last year around this date, I entered into the Brookline High School New England Student Woodworking and Design Competition, which was my first one, and I placed third in lathe out of all New England students. I competed, I am competing this year again on May 20th. On May 9th of this year, I competed in a New Hampshire competition sponsored by the Guild of New Hampshire Woodturners. I placed first and was awarded an $850 Ricon lathe, the machine that spins the wood while I carve it. Now I can make my own bowls at my dad's workshop. I'm glad to represent Merrimack and my high school, but most of all, I represent my family. They are all very proud of me, and they hope I will continue to pursue my talent. I'd like to give a big thank you to Mr. Carl for recognizing my talents and pushing me to improve through technique, creativity, and patience. Also, a big thanks to the whole Tech Ed Department for giving me my foundation and fostering a direction for my creativity.
Are there any Board members with questions for A.J.? Well, it's fantastic work. I can only imagine the time and patience it takes and the vision. So, there's the whole artistry, and then there's the whole, you know, obviously, the manual part of it, it's a very, you know, laborious product. But what is your, I guess, favorite wood to work with?
I like cherry.
Cherry?
Yeah.
Excellent. And what are some of the things that you're looking to do maybe in the next year for new projects?
Well, I just received my lathe. It's going to stay a hobby for a while, but I'd like to get more creative and do things with, that's called a hollow form. It's hollow on the outside, but it has a sort of cover to it. I'd like to get more into that.
It's stunning. It's, if you can't see at home, the detail of its beautiful work, so congratulations on the job. Well done.
Thank you.
I have to ask a question here of A.J. I did see him perform his work, and I thought for sure that this was going to be the piece that you put in for the competition. But if I'm reading this correctly, was it the other bowl that won the blue ribbon?
Yeah, the other bowl won the blue ribbon, but I have entered this one and the other one in another competition that will be on Friday, this Friday.
Wow.
I have to ask another question, because I'm spellbound. I've seen both of these pieces, I know Ms. Chaffrey has, and I've been told by a member of the New Hampshire Guild, he's never seen a young man with this kind of talent. So, what was it that made you choose this piece, or the piece that's won the blue ribbon over this piece here?
It was a hard decision, but I got a little advice from other Guild members, and that led me towards choosing the other one over this one. This one also wasn't going to be quite ready for the competition, the first one, but it's in there now, being judged. Thank you.
We are going to be introducing Wesley Nader at this point, and we were told that he's holed up, so we're hoping that he's going to be able to make it, and I'll try to reserve some space later for him in tonight's presentation. But these are just two wonderful examples of some of the great kids we have at MHS. And so, while our spotlight and focus tonight will be on our students, woven into tonight's PowerPoint is what I believe to be one of our most productive years ever, and in some cases unprecedented in the areas of curriculum, instruction, assessment, and co-curricular achievement. Regarding curriculum, and thanks in large part to a successful August Academy, in 2014-15, we will be offering and running five new AP courses, as well as four new interdisciplinary courses. And with many thanks to Nancy Rose, classroom instruction has been enhanced significantly and made even more relevant with the introduction and integration of technology in the classroom across the various disciplines. And in terms of assessment, our departmental collaboration days have yielded great work that has increased the rigor of our competencies and related rubrics across the board, while our math department has done extensive preparation for the smarter, balanced assessment, let alone everyone's contribution to kneecaps. Kudos to the class of 2016, our current juniors, for their effort and patience during this extensive testing period. In terms of co-curricular achievement, more of our teams met with success and advanced to the regionals and nationals than ever before. Our Granite State team went to the semifinals, and our Quiz Bowl team to the state championship. And the following teams, Science Olympiad, US First, DECA, and Future Problem Solvers, all qualified for the nationals. Very, very well done. And with that, we begin. I did see a slide up there from the young man, and this is Connor Pearson. He's another one of our seniors, and he wanted to launch an Eagles project, or this was his capstone Eagle project. So, if you come into the foyer of Merrimack High School, where you see our dedication to our soldiers, where you see a dedication to Tim Gibson, to our China program, and to MHS Today, it was Connor's idea to capture some of our history, and so he dedicated what is now known as the Wall of Principles. It's a fascinating project. All of the things that you see done in there were handmade by Connor. It's his design, and he worked in concert with Phil Carl to hand-make the frames. So, you have all of the principles up there from the very beginning to present. So, outstanding job by Connor. And so, with that, we begin. So, Merrimack's mission. Merrimack High School provides each student with rigorous educational experiences that develop intellectual potential, and here are a few examples. The New Hampshire Scholars Program launched a few years back. Now, 40 percent of our senior class are classified as New Hampshire scholars, a remarkable achievement. Here you have some of the activities that our students have engaged in, because as you know, as a New Hampshire Scholar, not only do you take a far more rigorous line of courses, but you also form connections with people in the business field. Advanced Placement. We continue to win awards for our advanced placement work. You'll see that this year, we had 107 students take the AP exams this month, which represents a 19 percent increase from last year. And as I've already alluded to, we have five new AP courses that are going to be a part of the day-to-day experience at MHS in 2014-15. Our Top Ten Scholars. You know, for years, in my time at Merrimack High School, a wonderful club known as the Exchange Club put on a Top Ten Dinner for our Top Ten Scholars. Well, time no longer permits them to do so, but with many thanks, if she doesn't mind my saying, to Superintendent Chaffrey, the Rotary will be hosting this year's dinner to honor the Top Ten Scholars and their parents. We have a picture of all ten, beginning with our valedictorian, Isabel Beauregard, our class president and salutatorian, James Jolly, and rounding out, our Top Ten, Shoshana Cernick, Hirsch Rye, Dylan Richardson, Blake Williams, Sandra Walzer, John Pittin, Catherine Brennan, and Skylar Valancourt. The dinner will be held on Thursday, May 28th, at the Senior Citizens Building. Many thanks to Superintendent Chaffrey and the members of the Rotary. Some highlights consistent with our mission. As you know, we have participated only seven years in the statewide Science Olympiad competition, and for the seventh consecutive year, we have been declared state champions. I want to let you know that we also include more than one team on occasion. Sometimes, we put up as many as three teams in the Science Olympiad, and there have been a number of occasions where we've actually finished not only in first place, but in second and in third place. And as you can see, they've headed off to the Nationals this year, to Nebraska, and I've already cited some of the other accomplishments from our Science Department. Congratulations to Mrs. Wancha, who has now been named a Member of the National Academy of Future Physicians and Medical Scientists, and appointed as an honorary Member of the Board just this year. She teaches physics at MHS. In the Business Department, and again, I'll go through this quickly, mindful that this can be viewed by the public on our website. You can see that a number of academic scholarships have been conferred upon our business students. I do find it fascinating that two students, Hirsch Rye and Haley Watson, were both offered permanent positions as a result of their work, Hirsch with Fidelity and Haley with the Granite State Credit Union. Hirsch was not in a position where he could accept at this time. Must be nice. DECA is another one of our teams who competed and traveled to the Nationals, and there you can read that we were quite successful there, as well with individual students, Alex Dano, and again, Hirsch Rye, receiving medals and scholarships for their outstanding performance. The English Department, probably the most significant thing to point out about the English Department this year is that they quickly got on board with our interdisciplinary push. And not only did they launch and create these courses, but these are all going to fly, so to speak, next year. The courses are Foundation of World Culture, The American Experience, AP Language and Composition, and Culture Shock. The first two and the last one I presented are all done in concert with the Social Studies Department. This is one of the guest speakers in our Creative Writing Class, Ross Dorr, well-known. And we have, and we'll go through these quickly, a few of the key field trips this year that were made by the English Department, trip to the Boston Globe, the Courier Museum of Art. Well, of course, they already have their contribution in terms of public speaking, once again, successful, and again, all funds going to the spare change for the Nashua Soup Kitchen. But this year, they also got involved with Mr. Wiley in the Ethics Forum known as Hype. Social Studies had a remarkable year. We had two dozen students compete on the National History Day, and I just received information, as we were coming forth today, that two students, Lauren Gerhund and Kelsey Kerewak, had been selected to attend what is known as the Breakfast on the Hill. It is a very, very rare achievement for students. In fact, what they will be doing is because of their good work and their great work on this day, they will be heading to Breakfast on the Hill and having breakfast dining with fellow congressmen and women. So, absolutely remarkable, first time ever for us. They also attended the Economic Summit, fascinating. That was held at Foxborough, and they did get chided a bit because as they were looking out on the field, it was during playoff time, and the field goal kicker, Steven Guskowski, was practicing, and they were chided for viewing what was supposed to be top secret. They also, they also did travel rather extensively this year. One of the great moments is having met with Sandra Day O'Connor, the Chief Justice. They also, and I was a part of the trip, to the EMK Institute, or the Edward M. Kennedy Institute in Boston, Massachusetts, which is absolutely fascinating. And of course, what has almost become tradition now at the high school, just an outstanding group of kids led by Mr. Petrino had a chance to tour Italy during April vacation. Again, much as we cited the great work done by the English Department, really as a result of the vision of our new Department Chair, Mr. Huckins, the Social Studies Department is moving forward rather aggressively with three new AP courses for next year. AP Microeconomics, AP Macroeconomics, AP Government and Politics, which is going to be great to have during an election year, World Studies. Students jumped all over the sociology courses and contemporary issues, and working with the English Department, again, three interdisciplinary courses, The American Experience, Foundations of World Culture, and Culture Shock. Some art highlights, as you know, the, we always refer to it as JAM, or Youth Art Month, was celebrated at the Carl Dreprup Gallery at Plymouth State University. And I just thought we'd show you some pictures or some visuals of kids who had great success. These are the names of those who won awards, Courtney Valas, Lilita Roches, Laney Rosati, and Aiden Garret, and here are their rewards. This is their work of art. Just, let's look at these for just a moment, Mark. And of course, as you know, as a result of the efforts of Mrs. Gray, we have an outstanding National Art Honor Society, which has really been a key program that pushed these kids to their success. Earlier this year, I was able to talk about technology education, personified by the very good work of Mr. John Van De Car, and we all remember that he was recognized by the New Hampshire Lottery and New Hampshire Motor Speedway as a winner of the All-Star Educators, and he was handed that award by Governor Hassan, and he spent $2,500 on tools for the automotive program. However, the group from which he purchased the tools was so impressed with the award that they gave him $5,000 worth of tools for the $2,500 donation from the New Hampshire Motor Speedway. And there are the pictures, Mr. Van De Car and Governor Hassan and his students. MHS Animation really is an example of some of the new software we're using, led here by Pam Foster, and I think we have a couple of video clips that we can show, Mark. You want to go ahead with those? This is all part of their animation software. Hopefully, the folks at home can see this. That's one example. Another. That may seem rather simple. It is not. It was complicated. You know, all the other robots were perfectly lined up there on the left. This robot was ready to join its companions, and his arm fell off, and he stops and turns and takes a look at it. A lot of time and effort went into that small piece. Very well done. You've already seen an example tonight of technology education here in the flesh with A.J. Canoust, and it was Phil Carl who worked with the Guild of New Hampshire Woodworkers who brought another youth lathe symposium to MHS. Just absolutely wonderful, and I thank Mrs. Chaffrey and Dr. McLaughlin for coming to visit that day, and here are some pictures from that great workshop. It was one week later that A.J. went to compete at Pinkerton Academy and took top prize from all of those students around the state of New Hampshire. Robotics is now run, that's of course, our first program, by Lindsay Di Lorenzo, and there you can see where we finished in terms of the New England's. Quite impressive when you look at the numbers of people involved, and remarkable how this program continues to grow and continues to succeed. Here's a clip.
Being a part of Chop Chop 166 has been stupendous.
Incredible.
Eye-opening.
Spectacular.
Filling.
Life-changing.
Fantastic.
Valuable.
Rewarding.
Impactful.
Amazing.
Co-tastic.
Inspirational.
Influential.
Exciting.
Phenomenal.
Unbelievable.
Amazing life experience.
Magical, because I've been watching the students this year relate to the young mentors that have come back after four years of college, after four years of this team.
I like mentoring because I like to give back what I got out of the program. Through this program, I met engineers that led me to an internship in high school in design drafting.
One of the things I've enjoyed about FIRST is seeing students who I used to mentor come into the workforce and be capable engineers, and also come back to Chop Shop to mentor the team.
Currently, a large percentage of our mentors are alumni of First Robotics, either from our own high school or from high schools in the area.
The fact that over half of our mentors are alumni really speaks to the culture that we have here at Chop Shop.
And I know for myself, my three children have all come back to help mentor the team.
They're coming back, and they're giving back to the program so much that they took out of it, so that's the magic.
Later on, the life island that not everyone gets to have a bike, and that's kind of above it. So our team does build a bike, and it's just so gratifying to like, give these bikes to underprivileged children so that they can finally ride around the block in the new awesome bike.
I love volunteering at the FLL events. I participated in FLL myself. I found it very enjoyable, and I love keeping up to date with the challenge.
Lego Camp has been a really unique experience. I love playing with the Legos, of course, and teaching the kids how to program.
Every year on the Fourth of July, we do a demo at our town celebration, and we decorate a float for the parade, which usually includes the robot.
My favorite memory was when we, as a team, won gracious professionalism, our first gracious professionalism, when we went to Wisconsin, the whole stadium felt wicked awesome when we went down the toilet.
The sign applause was from the Granite State Regional in 2007. There was one rookie team there, and they are from America's School for the Deaf near Hartford, Connecticut. They sat in front of us in the stands, and during the course of the competition, we noticed that instead of clapping, they waved their hands in applause. So when they won the rookie awards, instead of clapping, our team started signing applause to honor them. And gradually, the entire arena caught on, and instead of clapping, everyone was signing applause, and it just grew quiet.
To sum it up, Chop Chop 166 has spent 20 years being wicked.
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 Just, this is another example. I'm sure you were touched as I was when I learned of the kids who signed. It just reminds me of some of the remarkable things our kids do each and every year. Obviously, great parenting and great culture. A couple other pictures of Chop Shop 166. And of course, we moved to our math department. And I, you know, I want to emphasize that probably the greatest contribution other than designing a new course was the fact that this department spent so much time in preparation for the smarter balanced assessment, whether by administering practice or performance tasks. And you see pictures of them in work on either side. And if you get a chance to walk through the hallways, while it's not unique to math, their ability to integrate technology in the day-to-day lessons is simply fascinating. Of course, another part of our mission is to provide each student with rigorous educational experiences that will develop physical and emotional well-being. Graduation Challenge Day, I know I kind of sprung on the board. Probably could have done a better job of giving a heads up. But the fact of the matter was, this was something that really became a great springboard for our senior class. You know that in years past, Challenge Day was a program that we invited all students to. But sometimes we maxed out at about 300 students with a population that sometimes exceeded 1,400. This year, the class would admit they needed something to bring them together. And I will tell you, while they would even suggest to you that they have bloomed a bit late, they are just pouring it on in terms of legacy. And I firmly believe it all became relevant and significant on that very day, on Graduation Challenge Day, when they kind of looked in the mirror and said, okay, who are we as a class? I also want to let the board know that what we're considering for next year, because this was so powerful, is yes, another Graduation Challenge Day for seniors, but also a Challenge Day for incoming freshmen, so that they are familiarized with the culture of our school. The programs are going to be very different. They're going to be tailored to an incoming freshman class. And of course, tailored to the class of 2016 as they go out the door. We plan to launch that once again in March. In athletics, well, you saw me come forth earlier this year and bring before you the girls volleyball championship team. And certainly, while Jen would agree and Joe, her sister, would agree that this is a team sport, the success of that volleyball team was unprecedented. And you could see that Jen just had awards across the board, Player of the Year, Gatorade Player, Home Time Hero, Student Athlete of the Month, let alone a full ride to Quinnipiac. Her sister, Joe, also D1 All-State for Volleyball, and of course, Tammy Lambrou, D1 Coach of the Year. Unprecedented. There's a picture of the team right after the championship. Other people had tremendous success as well. Abby Smith in Girls Soccer. We had 23 senior student athletes who are recognized for participation in multiple sports and academic success. You have a real push by Athletic Director Sabian to engage our students in community service projects. And of course, there you see that four members of the class of 2015 earned full scholarships to D1 schools. Jen Coffey in Quinnipiac for Volleyball, Matt Brewster at Sacred Heart for Lacrosse, Julia Perry at UMass Amherst for Lacrosse, and Ashley Grissini at Hampton for Softball. Pretty remarkable. And the season isn't over yet. Also in athletics, John Snell, not the first time, named Boys Track Coach of the Year. What I'm particularly proud of, and I know that this is one of our goals, is to constantly push for sportsmanship. And as you can see, that our approval rating continues to go up year after year. You also see that some teams met with unprecedented success, including the girls cross-country team. And congrats to Kathy Merritt, named also Coach of the Year by the Nashua Telegraph. Rachel Schwartz, we just received this news the other day, will be honored at Fenway Park on June 14th as a Red Sox Foundation Scholarship winner. She's going to receive a $1,000 scholarship, and my numbers might be off a bit. But I heard that because she's receiving the award on the 14th after commencement, that the Red Sox have given her at least 20 additional tickets to bring her family and best friends along with her when she receives that honor on the field at Fenway Park. Pretty cool. Another thing, part of our mission is that Merrimack High School provides each student with rigorous educational experiences that develop social stewardship. So this is what the Student Congress has been about this year. They've encouraged us, and we're going to support them in changing the school dance rules so that students in good standing from other schools can attend dances with administrative approval. It may seem like a simple thing, but we found space in a new location for a brand-new lost and found, which they are going to keep track of, and they are going inventory. Merrimack Cares Program, I really can't say enough about that. That has been a dream of mine as a professional in the 30 years that I've been here. And finally, I had a group of kids and a Student Congress who are willing to support it. And I'll speak more about that in just a moment. I think that is going to be something that is going to have significant impact and a very positive impact on the town of Merrimack. And of course, the senior project is the remodeling of the courtyard. And that is what Wesley Natter was going to be speaking about this evening. We got some pictures. This is my personal philosophy. I know a lot of schools, to their credit, compel community service as a part of the graduation requirement. And personally, I've never felt that compelling volunteerism made a heck of a lot of sense because it strikes me as an oxymoron. So what I've wanted to do is instead to capture and enhance the spirit of student volunteerism instead of compelling it and having kids volunteer, believe in volunteering, as opposed to demanding that they volunteer. So we suggested through Student Congress this idea of America Cares, I should say, America Cares, Merrimack Cares. Those are the T-shirts that you have before you. In our senior class of about 340 kids, 300 students dressed up in the Merrimack Cares shirts and the Merrimack High School Gives Back program. As you can see here, I had a person call up the other day and said, Ken, I know you couldn't possibly visit all of the locations, but I am a businessman in town. And I drove all around Merrimack, and it seemed every block I hit, you'd see five blue shirts popping up, and you knew you had high school kids, teenagers, out there doing great things for the town. Now, here's a picture. It looks like the whole crew, but the truth be known, there were a bunch of kids still over there at the American Legion getting their hot dogs and their hamburgers, so they didn't get into the picture. But over 300 members of the senior class, and there were other kids who wanted to join this project as well. But they were taking their AP tests, so we made sure that they got shirts. But we're already talking about a fall and spring project in Merrimack Cares. Perhaps something as simple as a 5K run, where we raise funds to do something really important for the people in the town or for a food kitchen or disabled veterans. There are a lot of issues on the table right now. But it is a great, great program that I think is going to only get bigger. We have a student who will be going to Haiti next year, and he asked, can I wear my Merrimack Cares shirts to Haiti? And I said, you know what? This is a program without borders. This is all about Merrimack kids doing great things for their community, their state, their country, and others. These are other activities that are in support of the mission. Here you have the Random Acts of Kindness, what we call the Rad Road Race. It's a tongue twister, but they raised close to $400 for the homeless shelter at the New Horizons in Manchester. Here are just some of the kids that participated. We also have obviously a great theater program. And these are some of the programs that they launched this year, Higher Power, An Evening of One Acts. They just concluded the Pajama Game. I don't mind saying that I was in that play when I was in high school. And in June, we will have a Night at the Improv. Merrimack Opportunities is simply a page I would encourage all parents who send kids to Merrimack High School to look at because it lists all of the activities and more that kids could join when they come to MHS. Also, part of our mission is that students graduating from Merrimack High School will be competent, insightful, and creative thinkers able to compete in a diverse, global society. You may recall earlier in the year, and it's hard to believe how long ago this was, but back in October, early October, we were visited by a group of students from South Korea from the Gim High Foreign Language School. Their experience was to tour all of the Ivy League schools in New England. When they returned home, they said of all of their visits, it wasn't the Ivy League schools that impressed them the most. It was their brief time at Merrimack High School. And they begged to come back to Merrimack High School. And even though we were not formally on the agenda for next year, now they are. So on October 15th, they will be returning to Merrimack High School, considering us a sister school, their only sister school here in America. Those who attended may recall the percussion show they put on that day. In our World Language Program, you can see that we've had five students this year already receive college credit in our dual-enrollment program at SNU for Mandarin Chinese Four. That program also continues to go, and more than enough students have signed up for next year's trip to China. We also have Leeth Sukar, who won third place in the National Arabic Poster Contest. And I do want to emphasize National Arabic Poster Contest, which was organized by the Qatar Foundation. We, well, we just keep going. That was a, this is Kevin Championy. Kevin Championy, as you know, has helped to grow our Latin program. And just recently, they did carry out a recreation of the Punic Wars. I had hoped to capture some video for that one, but I think we'll just leave that for another day. But it was a wonderful day for the kids. In music, as you know, each and every year, our kids are touted for their success. You can see the number of things that our band has participated in. You can also see here a special award to Drew Halpin, one of only four New Hampshire students selected to perform with the All Eastern Honors Band in Providence, Rhode Island. But also 10 students performed at the New Hampshire All-State Festivals. And you can see almost 70% participated in other top events. I think that last line is very telling, that Merrimack High School had the highest number of entries from the state participating in the New Hampshire Solo and Ensemble Festival. And here's some pictures from the Band and Orchestra All-State, Classical All-State Chorus, and of course, UNH Band Day. You can't end a year with having, not talk about retirements, but this is a bit of a shocker for all of us. You know, often, we hire maybe four people over the course of a summer. But we have eight people who are retiring this year, and I do know that there'll be at least one more on the way. But Diana Plantier will be retiring from our English department. Sandy Ariman, our school nurse, retiring. In Special Education, Susan Rajiri. In Science, Trey Sleeper. Science Department Chair, John Snell, retiring this year, along with Lisa Schalliner in the Science Department. David Delisle in the Social Studies Department is retiring. Marjorie Brown, a power educator who's given 51 years of her life to the field of education, will be retiring. And John Vandecar in Tech Ed retiring this year as well. I think we totaled up the years, and it is, there it is, over 300 total years of experience in education. And we hope to honor them, I believe it is on the 16th of June at the Back Room in Manchester. Senior Week is not that far away. I know that it's about 25 days because my daughter, who is already graduating on that very same day, keeps running that number in chalk on her car. And it is that very week that seniors will be celebrating in tradition with their trip to Six Flags on the 9th, their senior semiformal on the 10th, and commencement, of course, on a sunny, hot Saturday guaranteed on June 13th, 10 a.m. And as you look at that, and you see those wonderful beach balls going up in the air, we know that this is the 13th year that the beach balls will fly. Curiously, this is the fourth straight year that the senior officers have selected blue and white, the traditional beach balls color, to fly that day with their theme being Rise Above the Rest. And that pretty much wraps up our presentation tonight. I hope I went at a good pace. I hope I didn't go too quickly. We're willing to entertain any questions that you may have. And I don't think that Mr. Natter is going to be able to join us tonight. But I do want to let you know what he was trying to do. Is it possible to flip all the way back to the beginning? Wesley is the Vice President of his class. And it was last year that he came up with the idea of transforming the senior courtyard. He's also doing this in memory of one of his closest friends who passed away this year, Sean Moran. Wesley has just been a great kid. You may recall, he stepped up when our visitors came from South Korea and did some rather extemporaneous speech. I know that, if you don't mind, A.J., he was going to give a gift there to Mr. Snyder, which is there to your left. And perhaps some other time, we can bring Wesley forward to see what he is, he's doing. It's really a remarkable transformation. But first, they had to do a lot of digging in that courtyard to move it forward. But soon you'll see what we will call the Senior Pathway, cutting right through the courtyard so our seniors can take a shortcut and perhaps get to their classes faster. A.J., do you mind bringing that shirt forward? And that's going to be for Mr. Powell and for Mr. Snyder, if you would give them to Mr. Snyder over there. Oh, there we go. Oh, Mrs. Guanyumi. Oh, you see? The students always know more than I do. Thank you very much, A.J. So if you, again, any questions for myself or Rich or Pete. Of course, many thanks to Mark Maryfield for helping us with this PowerPoint tonight. Thank you, Mark.
So are there any questions from the board? Cindy?
I would just like to make a couple comments. Thank you very much. This is really neat to see all of the things that the students are doing. And I think, you know, as kids go from the freshman year to the senior year, it's really such a remarkable change as they prepare to embark on their lives. And so, you know, what I really got from this was a flavor of that. And kids come through it with different skill sets, different ambitions. And what I'm seeing are different options for them as they, you know, continue that journey. So thank you for that. And to the community and to the community involvement that I think the students do, that's very apparent to me throughout the community, whether it's in the patch. I mean, there's pancake breakfast, there's Eagles. No matter where I turn around, there's something going on where you have these amazing young adults or emerging young adults that are establishing or improving on their leadership. I mean, what a great, not only to give back to the community, but to be able to foster. I mean, what a great, not only to give back to the community, but to be able to foster leadership that they can take with them as they go forward. So thank you very much.
Andy?
So, as always, it's always, always amazing to just see the myriad and the spectrum of the kind of things that occur at the high school in terms of academics, you know, athletics, the arts, and things like that. It's also interesting to see each year, new things that come up, but also the things that have remained the same all through the years, such as music. When my kids were graduating, that's what their focus was on. I actually do have a question. So the introduction of the new AP classes that you're doing, how much input was there from the student population of areas that they wanted to see the AP classes versus what the departments chose to do? And are there, is there a trend in the future to sort of add additional ones?
I think you are seeing a trend there, Andy. I mean, a lot of this comes from conversations with kids. You know, I think a big part of it, quite frankly, has emerged from the competencies movement. Because the competencies, you know, where you rank the kids one, two, three, and four, a lot of discussion was, how do I become a four? From a three, how do I become a four? And there was a lot more talk about rigor, if you will, without really using the word rigor. And as kids started to push themselves, you start listening to kids, we have ideas, we talk about, if we offer this, for example, the AP Government Course. Now, yes, that was something that was suggested by Department Chair Huckins, but it was something brand new. And it was like, who was going to teach the class? So Mr. Huckins had a chance to speak to some students to see if they would like to join. I believe there were up to eighteen assigned to be a part of that, that class. And this is when you were competing with all these new and wonderful interdisciplinary courses as well. So that's really been remarkable growth. I mean, these interdisciplinary is something we're not doing simply because NIASC, for example, wanted us to do it. This is what kids have been talking about, that's what teachers have been talking about. It was part of the plan of our August Academy, and I think if you offer more and more challenging things to kids, they're going to rise to the top. And that's what we've been trying to do incrementally each and every year without overwhelming them. I will say, their choices, you are right, are somewhat overwhelming for next year, but every AP course we offer is going to run next year, including those that kids might be able to get on, say, for example, V-Lax. And all of our disciplinary courses shy one are going to run next year, but I'm fully confident that we'll have additional ones the following year in sixteen, seventeen.
Great. Thanks.
To follow on Andy's, because I was hoping you were going to go granular, I could just skip my question. I know that you're going to do AP Micro and Macro Economics, two separate courses, and then American Government, but what are the other two new AP classes that you're offering?
The other one, you have an AP Spanish, and I don't think I necessarily listed that directly, and you also have the AP English Class. Rich, what is the title of that class specifically? I know I had it listed in the presentation, I don't want to misspeak, but I know it's going to be taught by Jessica Gott.
Literature and Composition.
Literature and Composition.
And are these on top of what's already offered, or they're, so it's going to be on top of?
Yeah, they are on top of, they're not substituting. And that's what's exciting, that here we are offering five additional courses on top of the AP courses we're already running, and we have more than enough numbers to run them. So yeah, quite exciting.
Gotcha. And I did have a question about interdisciplinary coursework as well. How is the course credit going to fulfill a graduation requirement?
Dual credit courses. You're going to be able to earn a credit in, say, for example, English and a credit in Social Studies.
So one class will get two credits, or one class will get half a credit?
Yes, they're going to get full credit. They're going to meet five days a week.
Two periods.
Gotcha. Okay.
Two periods, five days a week.
Excellent. And, let's see, that glare. Of the forty percent of seniors this year are New Hampshire scholars this year, do you see the trend line going up for, you know, with the junior, sophomore, and freshman enrollments at this point?
Yes.
Excellent. And do you have a benchmark goal for what you hope to get, say, of this?
Well, I mean, the goal-
I mean, we want a hundred percent.
Of course, we'll live a hundred percent, and that was ultimately the goal when we first started. And I remember with the student population leveling off, you know, I like to see it climb, realistically, climb to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty by next year, and then keep climbing to two hundred and so on.
Excellent. And then the other thing you talked about, and if you could give me a little detail, was about the streamlining of the math curriculum, and you specifically talked about Algebra Two. But could you talk about what streamlining is happening in the math area?
Well, what they're, what they're doing is they're offering, in other words, they're narrowing down the offerings around Algebra Two as opposed to offering classes that they wouldn't, that kids might choose that are not specific to Algebra Two. Is that at all helpful to you? In other words, so the curriculum itself is a far more core curriculum than the previous curriculum.
Okay, so it doesn't take away any of the-
Takes nothing away.
-electives that they would have had in that area.
No, no, it just makes it more focused.
Okay, that was, when you said streamlined, I was wondering about-
I'd say more focused curriculum.
Excellent. Okay, well, those are my questions. Well, thank you.
Hey, great night for MHS. Thank you very much. And thank you to A.J., and thank you for Tia and her parents for coming tonight as well.
You're great ambassadors of our school, and we appreciate it very much. And they can still watch you in the Dancing With the Stars because we put them first. Tell, don't tell us what happens, okay? We're DVR-ing it up here. We're just going to give a moment for them to clear out. Okay, it looks like we are wrapping up, so if we can go on to Agenda Item Number Three, which is the approval of the May fourth, two thousand fifteen minutes. Can I get a motion, please? Made by Andy, and a second by Cindy? Wow, that was hard to find, huh? I was running out of options, guys. Are there any amendments? Andy?
Yeah, I had just one. On page two, on line sixty-eight and sixty-nine, it says, Student Riley demonstrated how to cut something in half using marshmallows. Now, I'm sure that's a really interesting thing, I'd love to see, cutting something in half with marshmallows. I think it's more better stated as saying, how to divide a group in half using marshmallows. I think that's more accurate, but I'd like to see something cut in half using marshmallows.
I agree, but who's very happy with those marshmallows?
Yes, absolutely. And that's it.
Okay. Any other edits? Cindy?
I just have one on page one, on line forty-three, where it says, Board Member Gwamy shared, I was basically relating to the, to Mr. Gorman, his choice of Merrimack as a town to raise his family. So I would just switch that, that, I mean, I would just add a little more to it, that Board Member Gwamy shared her family chose to reside in Merrimack because of the schools and the overall Merrimack community.
And I only have two. One's on line thirty-nine, which will notice is blank, which I'd just like to add some, some context. And just add, Vice Chair Barnes asked if students used shaving cream in the tabletop activity, and if parents were told what was used so they could practice at home as well. So it was kind of, there was no contextual, just kind of out there. And then on page four, I only have two small edits. On page four, Section Seven, line one fifty-seven, it says, she explained she reviewed the minutes and notes, and only five of the curriculum commit, there were only five curriculum committee reports in the last twelve months, so I still had the same question. I'd also like to add, of the five reports, only one had content of a meeting that occurred, the rest were upcoming meetings to be held with no report of what transpired. And then, just one typo on line one seventy-eight, and that is, Vice Chair Barnes asked for a better understanding, instead of understand. And that's all I had. Seeing no other amendments, if we could put the motion to a vote, all those in favor of the minutes as amended, please say aye. Aye. And that passes three zero zero. Onto item number four, which is public participation, which there is no public, so there will be no participation. And then on to item number five, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants under five hundred dollars with Matt Chevanel.
Thank you very much. Speaking of the U.S. First team that was mentioned here this evening, we have a very generous gift to Merrimack High School from Fidelity Charitable Gift Fund located in Cincinnati, Ohio. And let's not forget that Fidelity is located right here in Merrimack, New Hampshire, for the amount of two thousand dollars to be allocated to the U.S. First program. I think that's fantastic, so I present that to you tonight.
And Matt, the Fidelity Charitable Gift Fund is like an extension of the Fidelity organization, but like a not-for-profit part?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept gifts and grants under five, so I have a motion by Cindy? Do I have a second? Oh, the second by Andy. Are there any questions or comments?
No. I just would like to accept it with our gratitude and thanks.
Excellent. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes three zero zero. Onto item number six, which is the consent agenda. Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Thank you. The following teacher nomination for you tonight, Reginald Bates II, English teacher at Merrimack High School. In addition, the following resignations and retirements. Trey Sleeper, science teacher at Merrimack High School. Ron Krikorian, tech educator at Merrimack Middle School. Jenny O'Hara, math teacher at Merrimack Middle School. Gail Severi, special educator at Merrimack Middle School. George Havner, special educator at Merrimack Middle School.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Andy?
I move we accept the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second? Cindy? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. And that passes three zero zero. Onto item number seven, this is flying now, we're on a roll. Is other, do we have any correspondence to come before the board? I'm seeing none. Are there any comments from the board? And there's one from Marge.
The comment I need to make is to tell you about an upcoming exercise that we're going to be going through with the Merrimack Police Department and the Merrimack Fire Department on this Thursday, May twenty-first. Central Office Administrators and Merrimack High School Administrators will gather together at the Crown Plaza from eight a.m. to two p.m. for a tabletop exercise in preparation for going through an active shooter drill at the high school after school concludes. So when school is over on June twenty-sixth, we will actually go through a formal drill that will help the police and the fire practice these skills. And so this is the preparatory staging for what we're going to be doing on June twenty-sixth. And so I think it just continues to tell you the partnership that we're in with them, and I think that's important to note.
Thank you, Marge. No other comments from the Board of Administration? That being said, we're on to item number eight, new businesses. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none? Onto item number nine, committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Andy?
Yes, on, I had a look at the calendar here, on May seventh, thank you for turning it, we had the Merrimack Safeguard monthly meeting. They covered the results, there was a public health fair at the Pheasant Lane Mall the previous month that the, that the Safeguard members participated in. A reminder that there'll be a mock DUI coming up. I don't remember the date, I'll have to look it up and maybe put it into the minutes we do that. But there's a mock DUI coming up for seniors at the high school, and we continue to go through the focus groups. There's, as part of our grant that we received in Merrimack Safeguard, we have to do focus groups for the different areas of the, of Safeguard in terms of things like school and business and things, and the focus groups are starting to actually meet now, and we're going to roll through all the different categories, hopefully, hopefully by the fall, that's our goal, so.
And any other committee reports? I have one. The New Hampshire School Boards Association Board of Directors had their end-of-school-year meeting on May twelfth, in addition to going over the financial budget for fifteen sixteen and the review of fourteen fifteen. We also went over with the Director of the New Hampshire Institute, or the New Hampshire, oh, I'm sorry, Interathletic, so, NHIA.
Interscholastic.
Interscholastic Athletic Association. My goodness, it's not even a long meeting, I'm sorry. And they actually presented last year, this time last year, actually, regarding their Life of an Athlete program, which is actually run by someone near and dear to us, who is Donna Arias, who started at Merrimack Safeguard with us, in her role with Beyond Influence. She is now the State Director with that program, for that program, with the NHIA, which is her new role. And they asked for endorsement from the New Hampshire School Boards Association for their program, which we, of course, endorsed at our meeting. That being said, if we did choose as a district to do it, I have some takeaway materials I'll provide to you, which I forgot to bring with me, and it'll give you some, basically where it's gone since we first talked about it a couple of years ago, when I was still the Safeguard rep. So hopefully you'll find that valuable information, and Donna is a great resource and a phone call away. Another thing that's coming up, just because of my old assignments, they were talking about student service tonight, so I wanted to just make a comment, and that is, there's a World War II memorial that's going into Veterans Park. It's being put in place, installed in, I guess, ribbon cutting essentially, on Memorial Day this year. And it was done by Hayden Faust, who is a student at Merrimack High School, and he basically did the, for those who you don't know, we used to have a World War II memorial, and it was at the library, and when, it had to come down because of the way they were setting up the library parking, it impeded that growth. So Hayden met with the person who put it up years ago, and it was done as a replica. So it looked just like it did when it was up at the library, which I think came down in the eighties. So it's, it's a true replica of that, and we'll have the listing of all the World War II veterans from Merrimack. So that's coming up, and it's on, you'll be able to see it as of the twenty-fifth of this month. And then Parks and Rec, and just kind of hanging over from my old days there, the Bark For Your Park, we talked about this last year as well. The Merrimack Parks and Rec Department has a Dog Park Subcommittee, and that Subcommittee has been working to get a grant from Petsafe, which is a, it's a manufacturer of like pet security and that kind of thing. And they offer grants for communities, and it's in Phase One right now. So you can vote twice a day at petsafe.net, and you can also vote on their Facebook page for Merrimack. If we are a finalist, you can vote twice a day between now and June tenth, and then the finalists will go for a final push to, to get, I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars, and there are a couple, second prize of twenty-five thousand. So we, as a community, have been working and raising money on a very grassroots level, but this would be a huge, this would get the job done. So, you know, go out, go vote, you can vote twice a day now until the finals, and if we make the finals, twice a day again. So hopefully, it will work out well this year. I think there's been a lot of ground swell. You'll see signs around town as well, so a little plug for that. And that is all of my Subcommittee Reports. Next is item number ten, public comments on agenda items, and again, there's no public, so we will go to Sign the Manifest. And I will entertain a motion to go into non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A, colon three, Roman numeral two, A, B, and C. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? And then we need to take a roll call. Cindy, how do you vote?
In favor.
Andy?
In favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion passes three zero zero. Thank you. Good night.